They didn't bid it that way. They bid them to slide them back and forth. And they've actually removed them now. They had a crane out here and did remove them.
I totally agree with you. But there was no way they could have done it without taking them all off, remember?
They had plans. They had drawn plans to shift them back and forth as they worked on the roof.
That was their bid, not our bid.
And I don't know, well, I don't know what that would mean. But they did remove them now that we're going to replace them.
So the real question is whether...
They had to remove them anyways.
Whether the library gets under credit before we do some...
I don't think so because I don't think we had put in there... I don't think they had put in there to replace them. That's what I'm saying. I don't think that that was part of the...
They were just going to shuffle them around.
But is it spelled... Yeah, I assume it's spelled out in the contract, so we'd need to...
We can look into that.
It probably wouldn't hurt us to look at the contract.
And that doesn't affect going to bid. That is something we can investigate.
No, exactly. I mean, you can figure out whether, at the end of the day, you have...
I think we should have credit for them because they had to take about 90% or...
Well, depending upon how the contract is written.
Yeah. We can certainly include...
The contract didn't include that in the first place, and they don't want sliding.
But did it include some work that they were going to be doing?
Right. That's what I... That's all I'm getting at, right.
Well, if in fact, I mean, maybe Rick can tell us. Not necessarily Rick today, but if in fact there was less work for Frontier because we decided to replace units.
Well, actually, there was a little more work because they guessed wrong. They could move it around. But they couldn't move it around because they couldn't keep that angle the way that it had to be. And as it was told, they removed it. And that's why their bid was significantly different than that one other's because of one other guy realized they didn't have to take them all off. And Frontier guessed that they didn't have to take them all off.
So then Frontier has now taken them off.
Right.
They haven't charged us any extra for taking them off.
Right, so we're...
So what I said is they have to put them back on.
Well, we're actually ahead if they've taken them off and they haven't charged us for it.
No, because they bid...
Well...
Well, yeah, but it's more to take them down than to slide them around.
It's their...
We'll look into it.
It's their loss, is what you're saying.
It's their loss, is what I'm saying. We shouldn't need it, they should need it, is what I'm saying.
If that's what they bid.
It is.
To see how they handle it.
They'll make it up, put them back on, trust me.
If they're the successful bidder, there's something to talk about.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
They'll make it up on the other end.
I have a couple of questions. The electrical on first floor, mezzanine. Does that anything to do with the wiring that Kevin's been looking into?
What is different between the separate wiring and the electrical on the first floor? That's a good question.
The wiring that would be included in bid package is just the regular electrical wall outlets.
He's talking about computers.
Kevin's still computers and networking.
That's computers and...
So this electrical is for the lighting?
Right.
No, and plug-ins. Electric 110 volt. This is all low voltage and communication.
There were two different animals, yeah.
There was two. It was alternates number one and two. I hit it on the bottom, but I just don't understand what they are.
Oh, the booklifts? We have a booklift that's in between the mezzanine and the workroom. It's not an elevator big enough for a person, but we send books upstairs and down to basement on that.
We're going to pull it out?
We're going to pull it out because the upstairs doesn't necessarily need it and we need to put a door through there. So this is to... They were going to have to reinforce it. Now they're going to just take it out, so...
How are they going to get books to the basement?
Well, we now have a ramp upstairs and we have a regular elevator that goes to the basement, so it's been deemed unnecessary. Plus, with moving circulation, they're much closer now between... Which is part of our goal, tech services and circulation. They'll have a door right through, so the books are going to go straight through the wall, the new materials.
And no maintenance contract then?
Okay.
That too.
And now that we have the place next door, do we really need to totally redo your part of the library?
The offices?
Yeah, because...
Oh, yes. We're not moving people over there permanently for office use.
At least not at this point.
Maybe temporarily while they're moving them, but yeah.
I thought you were using one of those, being nice conference room.
We use the conference room for conferences.
No, we're going to send Kevin over there, but nobody else. I never saw him smile so bad.
Away from muddling crowd.
We will be rotating people over there once there's public services there, but there won't be permanent offices that only live there. That'd be too far away from everything that's going on day to day.
And I don't know how sure you are of how you're going to use that spaceship anyway.
Several big ideas and a grant already out there for how to fix, how to do it. That's a different conversation.
I have a question on bid package A. The preliminary cost estimate, was that done by Rick?
I think it was done by several people. They gathered costs from, we have...
I mean, that group of people?
That group of people, yes, Studio GC.
Yeah, when that goes off to bid, is that estimate included?
No.
No, and it is usually on the high side, so we can cross our fingers.
Good, okay. That's not just those ones?
They tell me they try to guess high, so they...
Guess high, okay. To accept that it go into bid.
Okay, you just need to ask a motion to get it to bid.
Yes. Yes, and then we'll really be able to deal with these things.
Would you like to make that motion?
I would. Let's put package A to bid ASAP.
First by Paul, and who wants to second it?
I'll second it. Any further discussion on it?
It's a motion.
I hear nothing. That means you were all satisfied. Yeah, Kathy, I want you to look at it, yeah.
I bet you do.
Can't wait. You know you're getting wizy ass up here.
And so we publish this in the paper? We publish it on our website, just the way we did with the other...
Exactly. And it's pretty clear in here.
It's pretty much the same letter that the others were.
It's the letters in your packet.
Okay.
But you should have copies of this. This is what will go in the paper, on the website, and everything they need to know is in there, so...
If nothing further, Kathy.
Do you need more paper?
Carolina. Yes. Dave.
Yes.
Trustee Elbers?
Yes.
Trustee Novak?
Yes.
Trustee Peters, yes. Trustee Goldstein?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Okay, that's good, package A. The public space furnishings. We've gone through the place several times with Elizabeth to evaluate all of the chairs and tables and desks. Not the desks, that's separate. This is the public areas that we already have and what we can reuse. And particularly shelving. We are doing a lot more wall shelving with the new spaces, so we can use the actual physical shelves, but we need frames for them. We don't have wall frames, so that's part of the cost of that. And there is another pre-bid contract similar to what we're getting carpet through that Studio GC introduced me to, and I don't have the name of that, but it's going to allow us to not have to take the furniture at that price out to bid because again, it's a pre-bid government tool to do that, so...
Does that include the millwork to build the...
Millwork is part of this big A.
It's part of bid A. But what you were talking about, the enclosing the wall things?
Enclosing the wall things.
Enclosing the shelves and walls.
That's not building, that's not building.
They're pre-built.
That's buying pre-built shelving, yeah.
That are just installed.
Millwork is where they come in and they build something here. These are built elsewhere, just like anything else you buy and have delivered.
Like a custom piece is...
These aren't custom.
These are not custom.
These are not custom, correct. These are not custom.
Question on the... You have eliminated reupholstering some of the furniture here to some later date. Is there any... If anything is being bought that is already upholstered, is there a way to buy, to pre-buy fabric for when the time comes to do the other?
That's a good question. If it needs to be in the same room, I don't... I can check on that.
Otherwise, your dilots will be a problem. Could be a problem.
I don't think we have that happening. We're upholstering it in the same room, but I will look into that. It will also be much less expensive for us just to use a local upholster venue that we do.
I realize that.
So it was kind of them to leave that out.
Some upholstery is so easy that I can do it. I mean, you know...
Stapleton.
Yeah, you got it. I've done it, I know.
The circulation desk isn't going to be custom then? Is that part of the...
They are from the catalog where you select the...
Modules?
Modules. We worked it out.
Pre-bid contract for... What did it say we do?
They're calling it... They're just calling it furniture.
Widmer Interiors, you said, to company?
That's who Studio GC is working with.
They save us. They're going to be lower than any low bid would be?
Usually, it isn't able to be any lower. It's the lowest that they would... They've pre-arranged with the government, so I doubt you could do better anywhere else.
Would it be less expensive if you waited on some of that and then when we're done buying ourselves, then we won't have to add commissions?
That would be relatively unethical because the designer has laid this all out, made these choices, worked with them.
The space, oh, it's already...
It's a plan, yeah.
Okay, I understand. We need a motion to put this on the floor so we can discuss what we can discuss it. Somebody...
Motion?
Okay, I mean that we accept package to take to bid, package number four.
Actually, you're just going to accept it, right?
We're going to accept... No, we're not going to bid. We're not going to bid.
Why does it say estimate then?
Because...
It actually is probably going to be slightly lower because they gave us this cost before we said we'd like to reuse this, this, and this. So it's...
This is the number that they gave us.
That is the most it could possibly be. That is the highest it could possibly be.
So it's more to accept package number four, not to exceed 195,000?
That's good. Okay, that's good.
Good idea.
I want this package number four. They would have that listed.
What's the real number?
Entry display.
195,572.
But they kept the number the same.
Huh, that's interesting. Do we have a real number? Should we wait till we have a real number?
We can. It just means they can't order anything yet. And there's a long...
The lead time of furniture is... Could be up to two, three months. So sooner, I mean... Furniture is one of your worst lead times of all products out there.
Well, you may not get it all on the same day.
I will send the numbers out as soon as I get them, but I still think the not to exceed is the way to go.
How much is coming off of them?
So the first look that we had at this, the numbers stayed the same, but they had a entry display unit included on the first preliminary. The entry display unit's not on the second preliminary, and the numbers stayed the same.
I think what actually happened is we added more wall shelving. It might just be a coincidence that it's identical. Because I know since this came out, we reevaluated the wall shelving, but...
Why don't we just round it up?
Or round it down?
Round it down to 195.
Round it down to 195, I would actually suggest.
Can you do that in your motion?
Okay, I make a motion to accept package number four, not to exceed 195,000 dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
More discussion?
Any more? That's my rule, sorry. Don't take over yet. Thank you. Is there any more discussion? If not, I call out.
Our Dave?
Yes.
Yes, trustee Calhoun, trustee Elbers?
Yes.
Trustee Novak?
Yes.
Trustee Peters, yes. Trustee Goldstein?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to the law.
Just a couple of... One other thing to mention that is coming. Office Revelation is working on reusing as much as possible of our office furniture in the new configurations, and we've asked them to get their cost of new pieces plus moving and reassembling under 20K so it can be approved, and they have said they can do that. So their first estimates were higher. They're working on getting them down. We don't have a final number yet, but that will... There really isn't a way to bid that. It's a unique manufacturer, but it's much easier to get it to that figure so that we can approve that. So that's really the... That and the wiring are the only two things left that I'm aware of.
Then we can go on to the next agenda. I have a discussion of the purchase of the 6,200 Lincoln Caddo. I know Frank has some thoughts on this, correct?
I do?
Resolution?
Oh, I brought a... I did bring a resolution that I think would be good if we... I think it would be good for you to adopt the resolution. I'm pretty sure it's number four, right?
I'm asking for a motion to approve the resolution number...
No, it's number four.
214-4.
I think the last one was number...
We might have...
I think we missed three.
I think so.
No, three was the... Three was the...
Okay, whatever.
The user fee, I think, right?
The cards?
Or did we call... Or did we do a resolution to adopt the budget?
I have to look that up.
I'll tell you what. Well, what... To be numbered later, resolution number... Let's just maybe call the motion, resolution to approve the purchase. And figure out what number it is.
If we did 2014, 4A.
We'll just put them up in the...
Just, yeah.
So it would be a resolution to approve the sale, I think, for some...
Didn't we do that last night?
Well, you did a motion, and I think it'd be nice to have a...
We authorized the offer.
We authorized the offer, right.
Okay, so do I have a first on that one? Do you want to make the motion?
You make a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve, resolution to approve the purchase of 6,200 Lincoln Avenue.
I'll second it. Any discussion? If not, call the questions.
In section two, is the president considered...
Pardon me?
Are you considering the president in section two?
Yes, yes.
Yes, I am. I hate to say it, but yes.
Trustee Elbers?
Yes.
Trustee Novak?
Yes.
Trustee Peters, yes. Trustee Goldstein?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Calhoun?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Who's second in motion?
Paul.
I do.
We'll discuss the building then?
Please do.
I met with our treasurer earlier this week to discuss the fact that adding the purchase of that to our other build-out costs and everything exceeds the amount of money that we have. So he had me talk to MB Financial this week about the potential of a loan. And so yesterday... Yesterday, yeah. Yesterday Debbie and Chris came over and discussed what we're doing and that I felt that we were probably going to need between 500,000 and 750,000 at some point, even if just to bridge us till all of our money becomes liquid because it is in CDs. And so when I explained what we were doing, he said, "Well, it sounds like you need more like a line of credit than a lump sum loan because you don't need it right away and you may or may not need all of it at some point."
That's correct.
So, exactly. And in the commercial world, it comes across as kind of a combination of in the personal house buying, a line of credit and a builder's bridge.
Bridge loan.
And I've built a couple homes, so I'm familiar with that. So for the first year, we wouldn't even be paying interest on the full amount only as we drew on it. And then at the end of that period of time, however much of it we needed, that would become a loan going forward, so...
Don't the CDs come due within a year?
They come due every month. Now, last year, I think we might have one that went for two years. I'm not sure. So most of it is coming up within the year, every month. And as soon as we started this, I started telling Tim, "Don't reinvest it." So we have another... I think we have another 400,000 that's liquid again. It's gradually becoming liquid as we go. So hopefully, we wouldn't need much of this. With some adjustments to the budget, we can handle a monthly payment if necessary, especially going into the following year. So I just need to... I need guidance on how you want me to move forward with this.
Can I... Do you want a motion then for... To accept a bridge loan now to exceed 750,000 dollars?
That would make it easy for me to go forward.
Maybe I have a motion, say, to authorize the director to secure a line of credit for the library. That's the first conversion loan.
Yeah.
It's really called more of a line of credit. It functions... When he explained it, he said it functions like a bridge loan, but it really is a line of credit.
That's correct.
They give you a... Well, let's approve that.
The thing is, you may not have to touch it. This is kind of an insurance...
If we get all the grants that we've requested, if we have a foundation raising money, if the state gives the money for that stuff...
Second the motion.
Exactly.
Okay, wait. Should we have a second to the motion? We don't authorize nobody yet. No, a motion to authorize a line of credit for the library from MB Financial not to exceed 750,000 dollars?
I'll motion, yeah.
Second?
I'll second. Now talk. Do they give an interest rate?
Right now, the highest would be 5%. He might be able to get it under that. He said that commercial loans tend to average a point above private home loans, which are right around 4%. He did advise locking into it, so once we would close, but he was going to try to get it down to four and a half if possible, but to expect probably five, which is still awfully cheap money.
What would be the term?
Twenty... Most libraries do 20 years, a fixed rate over 20 years. Once we close at the end of the period of time.
We get it paid off. You can pay it early. He has the line of credit there.
There's no penalty for paying it off early. It's a line of credit until we close on the fixed rate on so many years. Then it's a longer line of credit.
You have to have that written in. No prepayment penalty here, otherwise they can get you under the table.
Right, but I brought that up with him, so...
It will be part of the...
Yeah, there'd be no prepayment penalty. We definitely want to be able to pay it off as soon as we can, right?
Yeah, of course.
Are we giving security and...
They want appraisal of both this building and the other building, and that costs something, so that's why today I was trying to get the appraisal that's already been done of the other building. That's exactly why I was going for that.
We had an appraisal done of this building, didn't we, Kevin?
We did when we had some...
Like less than two years ago.
And I need to find that and send it and see if that's enough.
For the insurance.
That was with the insurance policy.
We paid a lot for it, it better be enough.
They cost like $2,000, so...
It was about there.
So will they put a mortgage on the board properties then?
I think that's how they will write it, yes.
Technically, they have to... I think we should put you up for collateral.
I'm worth it.
I need to find that. I have not been able to locate an appraisal yet, but I have been to... So I need to find that. I think that's really the main cost.
That avalanche link in the insurance papers, because that's what it was done for.
See, she's been gone, so I couldn't ask her, yeah.
And we don't need the mortgage to close on the transaction, so that's not going to slow us down?
Correct. It's not going to slow us down with the building at all.
Okay, because we... I would need to know that now.
Yes, I know.
To change things, okay.
No, we were liquid enough to close on that.
The nice thing is too, is if things pan out correctly, we may not need it.
Exactly.
One of the brands we have no idea yet is electrical, correct?
The lighting brands? I have another update on that. I talked... Well, I talked a couple of days ago with the Energy 360, and there's plenty of money there, so we'll definitely get it. We will definitely get it. But the lights, only some of the lights that Rick has picked are currently on the list, and I would need proof from the manufacturer that they qualify. So I went back to Rick and said, "I need this letter from the manufacturer," and I sent him two emails pushing for that, and he said, "I've already told my group to have a backup light if it doesn't qualify." So they know they have to provide us lights that are going to qualify them. So once we have that exact plan, then Energy 360 compares... He already... He did the, what do you call it?
Payback in your own.
He counted everything. Counted everything we had. So he's already got a count of what we've taken out. He compares that to what we're putting in, the energy savings, and we get paid for that. I'm also...
Can we go on? Can we get a vote on this motion?
That's true.
Good point.
Okay.
A motion on the motion?
Not that it wasn't very interesting.
Sorry.
It was, it was. Okay, this is a vote on the motion to authorize a line of credit for the library from MB Financial not to exceed 750,000 dollars.
And was who was second?
The second was Paul. Okay.
Any other discussion? If not, call the questions.
Trustee Novak?
Yes.
Trustee Peters, yes. Trustee Goldstein?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Calhoun?
Yes.
Trustee Elbers?
Yes.
Motion, yes, seven to zero.
Just the tail end of that conversation is, next week, you know, next week or the week after, I'll be attending an energy workshop, which gives us fifteen percent of the cost back, just because I'm going to it. So I think that's worth going to it.
That is a nice launch that day, isn't it?
Aren't you a nice person?
Really?
I can, I can sit and be bored for half a day, right?
He won company, yeah, he won company.
If you get another one, will it be twenty percent?
Unfortunately, it's just a one-time, but it's part of the Energy Three Sixty, so.
You mean if I go, it'll raise up to thirty percent?
No, only one, only one chance. You go for me if you like.
Yeah, I'll go for it.
I hear you're good at lunches.
I'm good at lunches?
Yeah.
I like eating them, that's what you mean? I do better at ditters, though.
We're only going to be buying electrical things that, um, fall under the umbrella of this brand.
The, the lighting, yes, only buying lights that will qualify.
That'll qualify, yes, and therefore they may end up being free.
I'm hoping a big chunk of it is covered.
There's no such a thing as free.
Yeah, my buddy had his whole plant relamped and.
Wow.
Re, on, on comment.
Well, in that sense, we've already, already.
Saint Martha did it with Enron.
Is there anything else anybody needs to bring up?
That's everything on the agenda, so I don't really think there's anything else.
No, that was all I had, I ran out of.
I had little notes, the community assessment and the building needs assessment, we should write something up that shows the community how what we're doing rolls into that.
I, oh, that would be as relates to strategic plan?
Yeah, well, no, even as what we've done so far, Syracuse, they came in here and talked about the community needs and wants, what we're doing, purchasing the building, reworking this building, whatever, we have to demonstrate that all falls into.
Good point.
One big plan, so we should be looking at doing something like that.
Said by the committee.
Um, well, I'm not, if you mean a kind of a press release or something, I was.
No, no, well, just to have something that we.
I've been working on bringing the strategic plan together, and I actually put it on the next agenda in November, um, I was, what I was going to suggest in this.
Be nice if there's a press release.
Is, is, is that we form, I, I put together everything Sarah did with the SWOT analysis you all did a year previously, with input I've gotten from all the library staff, and at this point, I would like to turn it over to a committee that's maybe made up of a couple of board members and a couple of staff people and let them flesh it out. Uh, but just today, I redid a bunch of it based on all the decisions we'd made, because we're already doing things that were on there as goals, and it's kind of like we're in the middle of it and trying to catch up with the, the plan.
And then everybody's sensitive.
The plan's trying to catch up with us.
Yeah, exactly, right.
You know, environmental impact, right, so we're doing things around here, I think we need to play up the low, you know, the new lighting, what we're doing that's gonna help save energy, and then the HVAC and heating units that we're putting on are gonna be much more energy efficient than what we had, it probably wouldn't hurt to have our architect do a, a little analysis of what that's going to save us in energy costs?
And they do.
And play that out, yeah, because what we're, I mean, we're basically bringing this thing up to speed.
Elimination of the.
I mean, well, that's nice to have, but saving money, uh, utilities is very important.
Saving money. That is forward, it's, that's very important.
And these units will pay for themselves if they are as efficient as I think they are, so, what we used to spend.
Well, they are making them better, Mark, I have a very efficient unit in my house, and my bills are less than they were.
Right.
Years ago.
So we're good stewards of the public's money if we're doing this, so that's letting them know that.
I think that's what I do.
And that's all I got, so let's go ahead, pizza's served.
I have one question to ask.
I have the mayor's door.
Yeah.
Has everybody turned in any good assessment of?
I've got one here, I get it.
Are you coming to the meeting on Monday?
Okay.
Uh, I, did I get assessments from Paul, Carlotta, Dr. Calhoun?